Called the January twenty twenty five County Commissioner meeting to order. We'd like to welcome our new County Commissioner, Mr. Keith Bowen, and we'd ask that he do the invocation tonight.
To follow to come to you tonight, just praise your name for giving us a good day to God. Thank you so much for our help and our ability to come out and serve you in our community, the Lord. I just praise we're going to this meeting tonight that you'll guide our thoughts and our actions to be in tune with you, that we'll do everything possible to praise and honor glorify you in all things we do. Let's remove ourselves from the equation that you work through us and just know my prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order business would be the election of officers. I need a motion for a chairman.
Well, I think everything's been going okay. I mean, like it has lately. Can we take it again?
I need a second. I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I need a motion for a vice chairman.
I think, like she said, all been going well, so I would a motion for a vice chairman. Mr. Cox?
I second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right, so moved. All right, now appointments to committees. The only thing that I see is Mr. Cox would like to be on the road. Wanted to be on it last year, so I put him on that. That's okay with everybody? We need a motion for that? Or is that just a?
Yeah.
Need a motion to?
I make a motion.
Need a second?
I second.
All in favor? All right. Um, I'd like to put Mr. Keith on, I'd make a motion to put him on emergency services and take Jeff off.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye. And that's really all I see. Unless y'all see something else y'all want to change?
Yep, okay.
All right. We need to talk about the county attorney. We just need to approve him again for a year?
Uh, yes, sir. He submitted a letter. He's not raising his rates.
So we need a motion to accept him as a, for another term? Need a motion to accept County Attorney Wes Baldwin to another year? I make a motion. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I need approval of the agenda. Need to add anything? Everybody here?
There's some department stuff they'll talk about in the departments.
Okay. All right, I need if everything's in order, need approval of the agenda. Need a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes if everything's in order. I make a motion. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approved financial report. Need a motion if everything looks in order?
I'll make it.
Need a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have appearances. Ms. Dana Glass, the CEO of Aspire.
Good evening. My name is Dana Glass. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and the executive director for Aspire Behavioral Health and Developmental Disability Services. We are your safety net provider for mental health, addictive disease, and developmental disability services for youth and adults. Brought you some updates. This includes our annual report for the last year. We served about eighty-five hundred individuals across our eight primary counties, which does include Miller County. Miller County in particular, we served, we provided fifty-six hundred direct episodes of care to the residents of your county. And this included a continuum of care, everything from use of our Behavioral Health Crisis Center, our detoxification services. And we also provide community support team here locally in your community. We've had some of your residents admitted to our Touchstone Residential Long Term Treatment Program for Addictive Disease over in Arlington. And then we provide an outright, an out, an array of outpatient services for youth and young adults throughout the county. So we're in all of your school systems. That's probably where we have your biggest, our biggest impact here. And then we also do outpatient clinic services behind, in our office behind the hospital. And we do group, family, individual, we do assessments and medication management for your residents. Part of the reason that I also wanted to come was to request a new appointment to our board. The board members for our board are appointed by all of the county commissioners and your current board appointment has not been able to participate for quite some time now. And there's been about two years since we've had her be able to be present at a meeting. And so part of our requirement from the state is that we have an active and engaged board. And so we were trying to request a new appointment, possible.
All right.
I know Ms. Lee Roblesy, and I don't know how to pronounce that last name, but she was interested and has been a wonderful partner and supporter of, supporter of Aspire. So she, I have discussed that and she said she'd be willing to serve if that's a possibility.
All right, well, Doug can reach out and we'll get, we'll get somebody.
Okay. Except you can just let me know my contact information is in that folder.
You want me to reach out and if, if she agrees, or y'all in, in agree, us to go ahead and send her the letter, say?
I am, of course. She's willing to serve. Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. Then we'll just get a letter of appointment once that's settled. Thank you. Any questions for me?
You want to make a motion or you want to wait till?
You'd probably best to do it.
Wait. Go ahead, do it. Make a motion to appoint Lee Roblesy to the Aspire if she so chooses. Everybody?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
County ordinances?
So I, I gave y'all a copy of the ordinances last month and Mr. Keith wasn't on the board. So I went ahead and emailed him the ordinances. I don't think he's had ti- uh, time to look at it, so maybe we'll just move that until next month.
Yeah, I want to table that and then us all get together, maybe have a little workshop and talk about all of that. If that's okay with everybody? Need a motion to table it? I'll make a motion. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, tax assessor board appointment?
Um, this was on in November, so I just was bringing it up to let y'all know that y'all need to still kind of give us some names. I know Mr. Mike said he's got a few names that he's checking into, so the more names we can get. Y'all know anybody that's, you know, it's time to step up and support your community and want to be on that board, just to give us, give us their names and, and we'll bring them back to y'all and, you know.
So maybe at the next meeting we'll appoint somebody, get some names?
I won't. Just checking them all.
Okay, all right.
So he'll check on his end and then whatever the list we give, we'll bring them all and put them together and let y'all just talk about it.
All right, sounds good. All right, person, mail, policy and procedures.
Um, we've been working on this since last year, so I, in the, in the blue folder, um, basically like the ordinances, I just want you to kind of go ahead and look over them. And we can, we can address all this in February, but that's the new county or, uh, part personnel policy that we come up with. Um, you know, we had those issues with some of the drug tests. We've, we've taken out that provision about the help and it's, it's just an automatic termination now. So y'all just look through all that, read up if there's something that y'all think you need, need to add or changed and we'll just make a note and we'll, we'll change that in February.
All right.
The same goes with the, the next one, which is the personnel policy. That's in the red.
Right.
Um, and the, the biggest issue with that one is, you know, before I came on, we wasn't using the Georgia Precairment website. Which, you know, anything over like fifty thousand dollars, you're, you're required to put that on the Georgia Precairment website. So now we have the last several bids that we've done, we've started to use it, but we need a policy that states that. So that's got that listed in there.
You want to do that next meeting?
Yeah, same thing. Also, um, it also gives some leeway. I mean, I know normally you get three quotes, but in this day and age, you're not going to find three quotes. So we've dropped it down to two quotes and three if you can get it. Those are the only two changes in there.
The GSI software agreement.
Um, this is, it's, it's in your packet. This company's one that, with Ms. Jennifer Herden, she, they're going out of business in June. But they still have to function until then. So this is the last annual contract that we'll have with the G, was it GSI?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, and then, then Levy says she'll come up and find a different vendor if, if the woman is not going to work out. So that's just a, an annual renewal that we don't, we don't.
So we need to make a motion to?
Make a motion to sign. There's two of them in there, but it's the, one's the software and one's the mobile homes.
All right, we need to make a motion to sign the government agreement with government systems. Need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The GMAS contract.
All right, so it's also in your packet. That, that was presented. They just need to get a new contract. It's a three-year contract. They may, you may have any more information on, on any of that, but it's, it's your standard contract. I think it went up because, um, not having a tax assessor. So GMAS will kind of function in that role till we get one.
Anybody got any questions on that? Now it's time to ask y'all here. Go ahead.
Even though I sign it, you have to sign it.
Right, right.
So, you know, we, we cannot obligate him into a financial thing, so you watch.
That's right.
Your case is what we've had, just about, about three thousand more a year.
A year?
Yes, sir.
You got any questions? Nikki, Christine? So this acts as our tax assessor for the time being temporarily. Any questions? So we need a motion to sign this agreement?
Yep.
Need a motion to sign this agreement? I make a motion to sign. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Building department bank account?
Hey, just, I mean, like, go up the tower where you need to do that.
I missed that? Name on my thing. He didn't put it on my thing. Tower removal? So we need a?
I sent that out and you guys, you know, through a group chat about the, uh, EMA and this tower over the sheriff's office. Um, the light has burned out on that and it, it's cost just as much to remove it as it does fix the light. And you guys voted to go ahead and get it done. I just need a formal vote and it will be done the last week of January.
Do you need a motion to do it?
Yeah, just formally put it on record.
Need a motion to remove the tower at Sheriff's Department?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Now building.
What, what are we going to do with the tower once it's down? Do they take it down and carry it off or are they just taking it down?
Once he gets here, I mean, if we can store it, we, because we probably can use some of the sections. I know Austin needs to put up cameras, um, at the dump sites. So that i- if it's tall enough, we can probably get it cut down and use some of that section. But we, we had planned on keeping it, so.
But we're not using it currently, correct?
No, it's, everything's off that tower.
Yeah, okay. All right, now the bank account.
We just need to open a separate checking account for the building department, separate it from the tax assessor. So I just need y'all to?
Need a motion for a favor to open a separate bank account for the building?
No, no, you've got that one. We already have an account.
Yeah, we're just, we're opening.
We're opening for the building department.
For the building department.
Just a new account.
Just a new account?
New account for the building department. They're going to keep those existing, the tax assessor.
Motion to open a bank account?
For the building.
For the building.
For the building department. There you go.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two thousand twenty-five TANs note.
Just gonna have, go ahead and give Tristan one.
He's wanting a motion to open it?
To go ahead and open it for when we need it.
All right. Need a motion to open a new TANs note, two thousand twenty-five?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Tax commissioner contract?
So this is a contract between the city and the tax commissioner. Um, any contracts, you know, you guys got to kind of approve and sign it. So that's what it is, is allow and leave it to go ahead and collect taxes from the city.
Now, I need a motion to enter a contract with the tax commissioner? I'll make a motion. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. All right. Department reports?
Um, all the department reports are in there. Uh, Virginia's, she brought hers late, so it's right there. I can put it on each table. Um, but every, everybody's reports in there, Survival Flight, the, uh, EMA nine-one-one, all those are in there. And if you want the other ones, you would start talking about the, amongst the departments.
Sheriff, you got anything you want to say? Easy. You got three minutes. Nothing? She just, you want to talk? Okay.
Um, there's just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. One of them is we have an old mobile command program that we've had as a theme program. I think we might have paid fifteen hundred dollars for it, twenty years ago, something. It's falling apart. The bottom's falling out of it. We need to replace it. Um, we need to ask if y'all could do surplus and see if we could sell it, get the radiators out of it. And then I talked to Cory about the city possibly going in half with us on a new mobile command one that's a drivable unit that, whether you're a one could get in and just take it to the scene. We'll have to get a truck, pull a trailer and all that. So we, we looked at a couple, but we got to get rid of this whole first and then, you know, either the county can buy the whole thing or the city might help with that, but I don't know.
I'm for the city and the whole of it.
Absolutely.
Anyway.
So you want us to surplus that tonight and then you're going to get us some prices?
Yes. And we, there is a possibility of some grant money for mobile plans coming out under Homeland Security, but I'm not sure. We have some other things. I know we're trying to get two mega generators for the, for this office here, um, in case the neighbors soon have power and operate. And Garrison needs some things for the sheriff's department. So we're looking at two or three different things we might want to apply for grants, or which would be a seventy-five, twenty-five match. That's all, uh, possibility. Um, I would like to request all of the county commissioners and I'm going to the city council to, to take a NIMs training. It's four oh-two and it's for elected officials to let you know what we do as emergency first responders and what, what powers or emergency ordinance and stuff like that you give. It's like a three-hour class, but I need everybody to attend it one time. Cause we'll get a guy from DEMA to come down and, and train it and we might concede you on it. I just need y'all, y'all do it daytime, nighttime and come up with a date.
Just get with Doug and then he can coordinate with us.
So y'all willing? I guess that's my question.
I think, I think, yeah, I think, oh yeah, I think so.
And we would also have our tier one group, just all our emergency department heads. They're all going to come to. I think it's really important for all of us to be in the same room, hear the same thing and, you know, work together. Um, that's really all I got. I think we just got some stuff to do on that. Maybe do it. But if y'all do that, for the trailer, that's appreciated.
What Miss Debbie said, um, really what I've come to talk about is the possible add-in third dispatcher. And what I mean by that is we have room for four consoles. We have three that are operational. Um, calls are, call increasing. Um, from twenty-three to twenty-four, our total for Miller and Baker County that we answered was two thousand and sixty. That's how, how much it went up over the course of the year. Um, right now I run two dispatchers per shift. I'm there during the day, but there's only two of them there after I leave. Um, we answer eight channels. I don't want to say channels, I mean, radio channels for Miller and Baker Counties. And we have four add-in and six novel one lines that may ring at the same time. Um, the calls are getting worse in nature. They're taking us a little longer to talk to the people because if we've got somebody that's on the phone that doesn't want to hang up, we can't hang, we're not going to hang up with them. We're going to count all with them until somebody gets there. Um, I've talked with Doug, um, about us getting E and D certification, which is the emergency medical dispatch. Cause as of January of last year, all certified communication officers are required to be TCPR certified. So we, all of us are TCPR certified, but we do not have a policy in place right now, so we don't use it. Um, but if we could get the E and D certification, um, and have a medical director sign off and help me create a policy and get us the cards, we would use it. If we do that, a third person's really going to be essential to us because if I have one dispatcher that's on the phone with somebody that is doing this E and D, we're going to need the other two people taking the phone calls, taking the radio traffic. So one person is dedicated to that person on the phone who's in need of help. Um, it will help us on anything major, our bad weather, a major structural, a major wreck, anything that we may have multiple phone lines ringing, multiple radio channels at the same time. It's really hard when it hits like that for two people to handle it if there's not a third person close by. Um, so I would just like for y'all to think about that as we come up for the next budget year, possibly adding that third person to help take the strain off of the other ones. Um, that will require us to update the CAD system or the computer aided dispatch that we use. Um, we would need to add that fourth console. And when I say that, there's room for three people now, but if we keep a third person full-time, the accessibility I have will be non-existent. So if I'm at home and they call me up and something crashes, I'll have no way to get into it because I use that third side. So we would need to put that fourth one operational. Um, and I've talked with Miss Debbie today and it's possibility that we make a pop or grant that would help cover the cost of updating the CAD system.
How much would that cost? Just ballpark figure?
Yes, Freddie, you remember, I'd have to look all that up. What, what we're going to need to do is get with the other county.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's kind of been the same payment for about twelve years now.
Right, we kind of figured out already.
So if we do this, we need to, that contract is really outdated and we really need.
Twelve year, twelve years outdated?
Have it updated or do away with the one.
Exactly. Cause it's twelve years at the same rate.
Right, okay. And this would really be help, helping them more than us, maybe, so?
At least as much, really.
Um, really it would be, if we did the third person and we go with the, the E and D, um, classes, it's going to help citizens of both counties. Cause right now, if you call us and you have somebody that may need CPR, we can't give it to you because we don't have their certification and we don't have the cards. We just don't have it. So we're basically standing on the phone with ju- just telling you that help's coming. And we're getting them there as quick as we can, but our hands are tied until we can get this certification. And honestly, if we get it, I believe it's going to be able to help everybody on bo- on both sides. Um, it's just a matter of can we, can we get where we can meet in the middle and get it at once?
Now Survival Flight's going to pay for the E and D certification. We just have to work out the, some kind of contract logistics we got to get.
And also when we're talking about adding the third person, um, the fire chief's not here to explain it a little better than I can, but as far as our ISO ratings for insurance purposes, if we add that third person, that's going to help in the long run as far as his department goes and the citizens. Because ISO is going to say, well, there's three people. You have one person dedicated to your fire. Where right now he actually gets points deducted because we don't have one, because we have, like I said, we have eight channels and two people. So we have one run in Miller County, one run in Baker County. Nobody's dedicating to fire. If a fire happens, it's just whoever's on that channel. So it will help in the long run, that stands too.
All right. Well, we definitely look into that then.
Thank you.
And you said Survival Flight will pay for the certification?
It's for the E and D certification.
So we need a motion to surplus your mobile command center?
Mobile command trailer.
I need a motion to surplus her mobile command center. I'll make a motion. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything else?
Um, anyone talking about the excavator and the ladder?
All right. You got five minutes now.
I'll be quick. You've already seen in the pamphlet I gave y'all kind of what we need to do to that. Um, Doug's got paperwork for a grant that we need to chair. Um, Doug's got paperwork for our grant that we need the chairman to sign, where we can send that off to get the money to continue paving. Um, now we're paving on Cooktown. I think we kinda assume we gonna continue paving on Cooktown. We had talked about starting at different places, you know, the last time, but um, we're actually repairing on down the road. The worst section in the road, I wrote it today, the worst section is um, from where we leaving off paving now, on down past Griffin Sherfield. Um, we'll catch that in the next paving. Um, and it's gonna actually work out that if we tie on where we leave off and pave the next paving, we'll like one more paving making it to the crossroad, and then we'll like a mile and three tenths on the Baker County end. I'm sure Layden, he goes that way a lot, sees the Baker County end probably more than we do. The Baker County end, we're gonna go spend about two weeks down there, and we got some drainage problems in the ditch, and there's some trees that spilled. We gonna just go down there, spend about two weeks, get the limb cutter, the excavator out there and do some work. We got, got two places, Layden mentioned one of them a while back there, right past steer hole road that the water comes in the road, cause the ditch is filled in. We'll go ahead and get that taken care of, get the trees out the road, get them cut back, get the drainage issue under control. And then I'm gonna put a crew on the starting end and the finishing end. And we're gonna walk Cooktown and cold patch whatever is there, and kinda heal it up really well. And the big section there, Mr. Red Coots' house, we doing thirteen hundred and something feet right there. We gonna overlay that road where that bad spot is, and go ahead and take care of that now. What I really wanted to do is, we like two things, signing the paper, just the letter to get the money. And when we fill out our paperwork, we need to kinda know a start, finish point. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was good, we just tagging on where we left off and keep going. Cause that's, that's gonna catch the worst part of the road that's left.
On that bad part, you was talking about cold patching.
Well, we just gonna cold patch potholes now, we gonna, they're gonna pave over, we're gonna overlay a lot of paving machines out there. The road's really bad there, and if we don't go ahead and fix it, we're gonna go ahead and overlay that bad, real bad spot. That'll take care of the really worst spot on that end, except for, on the Baker County end, there's a couple little spots we can cold patch up, but the worst problem down there is really some trees that failed that just got cut back and hadn't been cleaned up, and we got some water coming out of a field that, actually the ditch is just filled in. We just need to restructure down there and do a little work, and we can make that road a lot better, just working on it, but um.
Any bad spots, I wouldn't put cold patch on.
Well, I'm not real bad, we got one place down there at the crossroad that we'll probably go get some hot patch and fix, but then, you know, just the little potholes, we gonna kinda work on it and get it in better shape. But we, we can go either way, we cold patch or hot mix, whichever one we need. But, but we gonna, we gonna work on it, you know? Um, but my question is, is everybody good with us tying right back on and just continue on? Cause it will catch the worst, the next paving will catch the worst section of that road. Um, and if everything works out good with the way the money's been coming in, I'm figuring, May or June, we, you know, depending on how fast they, we can get the paperwork done and get somebody back in here, we probably can pave, you know, the next paving, May or June, so we won't be long in between.
Right.
But I just need to fill out that part, where we gonna start and finish, and need to get y'all to sign the letter where we can go ahead and get it out of here and get the money covered.
Oh yeah, I'm fine with uh, continuing on with the roads if everybody else is.
It look, what they, what they've done so far looks good.
It looks good, I wrote it, it, it looks good.
Okay.
You know, as long as he, like he say, uh, heading down toward the Kimball Road.
It's pretty rough.
Uh, it's rough.
Yeah, we, we gonna, we gonna work on some of the, the left parts of it. Um, it, if, if it works out about like I figured it, and it did on the last paving, when you go past Griffin Sherfield, just before you get to steer hole and um, I can't call the other name, St. Paul Church Road, there's a big field on the right end to left, and then there's a house on the right. Just before you get to that house, it's, it's gonna wind up right there, just before you get steer hole road. And there's a bad spot in the road right there, but I'm hoping that we get just enough that it'll make it cover that, but I, I wrote it, really looked at it good, and that's the worst section is, not, what's left now is, that's the worst section of the road. We need to, I think we need to just continue on with the sale.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I, the excavator and the big loader, you know, you get, and you pack it in the back, back there, both of them it plainly tells us what's wrong, you know, kinda what's wrong with them. We've been working on a big job, you know, we did rock road, and that was, that was major, and that's, the big loader kinda gave us some problems, but we didn't shut down and, you know, stop in the middle of it to break it down and try to work on it some. There's some of those problems I think I can fix on the big loader. Um, we may have some that we may have to live with on it, you know, I don't, I don't know, but the tracks on the excavator, we got to do something with them. I mean, that's just, they're just, they're maxed out, and they wore out. I mean, they're about to come apart, so.
So what's that, how many hours is on that machine?
Right at four thousand hours on the excavator. If, if the, if the meter's working, I mean, I, I looked at it the other day, and um, I don't know that the meter's working or not, to be honest with you.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's only got just a little hand tack meter, it don't have anything else, and it's just this old school meter, I don't know if it works or not.
What you think it's worth, have you ever get a value on that, Doug? You got a value?
I, I haven't got anything from any, I requested some, and um.
John Deere was supposed to come in their Thursday.
They, they had, John Deere had showed up, cats working on, kinda giving us a price on. Something on.
What, what size is it, a three?
This is a three fifteen.
Three fifteen.
The new, the new excavators, the three fifteen, they downsized them down to the compact, um, to stay like we are.
Those are the smallest big frame excavators.
Yeah, we, we, we need to move, what we'll need to do to stay like we are is a three seventeen.
Three seventeen.
And the reason I say that, we can dig with the three fifteen, with it compact, but we handle so many big trees that I don't think it'll have the muscle to do it if we don't stay, you know, with the tail weight and.
Right, right.
And all that, we won't have the, we won't have the manpower to go and handle these big oaks when they fall.
Yeah.
I mean, digging's really not a problem, but sometime we need a little bit of.
How much did you redo the tracks on it, you got a price?
Right, it's about fourteen thousand, or I took a quote right at Christmas, you know, I mean, everything changes, but it's the ballpark, fourteen, fifteen thousand. That was just kinda going through, and if all the rollers is good, you know, we had, maybe a little more once we pulled tracks off, but.
How old is that thing, fourteen years?
Eighteen years old.
Eighteen year old.
All of our construction equipment that we use building roads are from eighteen to twenty-six years old, every piece of it. Except a couple dump trucks that we've replaced, even some of our dump trucks are that old, but the actual working equipment, when we leave to go build up roads, like we built Rock Road up, everything we using is from eighteen to twenty-six years old.
Right.
And.
And it's never had tracks on it before?
No, it's, it's, unless I'm mistaken, that excavator has never had a service call made to it.
Don't change it, don't change it.
I, I'm, I'm just, I mean, it's been, and with us talking about it.
We'll all get together and we'll kinda talk and let Doug kinda do his thing and, and try to shop it around and.
If we ever intended on really get, getting a pit or not getting a pit, what, like Rock Road, I got some dirt, but when I stop pile dirt, when we get dirt, we don't have a pit, or if you had a pit. When you stop pile it like that and leave it, the big loader won't load it. You got to go with the excavator, bust it up, actually restack that whole stack. Then you got to move and go to work, so you double working. This excavator's not the worst one in the world, so if you got any intention of buying a new one, I'd really like to see if y'all would let us keep it to have, or, you know, we may not do a lot of walking with it, but we can, we cannot have to double work near as much.
You gotta get crazy, now we talking about getting a newer one, now you gonna keep one in?
Well, if you don't have a pit and you need to dig, I mean, you steady moving back forth, I mean, that, that was a lot of double working we done. We moved over thirty-five thousand tons of dirt to do one job, and we moved.
So if you gonna do that pit work, do you need the tracks on it still?
Well, good question, I can't move it around without them, but it's something we could think about that we might can patch up a little bit to keep it sitting still. You know, like you moving dirt, you're just kinda moving a little few feet, you're not out there walking like we walk out there on the jobs we do. And, and we won't double work near as much.
What was you meaning when you said the loader wouldn't load it from the pit to dirt?
Uh, like the dirt, I got dirt stop pile right now, like we get a bunch of dirt.
You talking about it too tight in the.
It's, it's packed, and that loader will not go into it. You got to take the excavator out there, and basically they, if you're gonna move that whole mountain of dirt, you got to dig that whole mountain and just set it back over and redo it for it to be loose enough for the loader to load it. Once you do that, then you carry the excavator where you're working, and the loader will load the trucks and send them to you. But, you know, you're doing a lot of moving and a lot of double working, and this old excavator is not, you know, tracks is worn out on it, and it's got a lot of wear on it in eighteen years, but it's not where it can't sit there, you know, and, and, you know, and dig dirt, and then you won't have to double dig. You know, you can just sit there, and when a truck comes, you can be busted up a little and load the trucks, send them out. You don't have to, Rock Road I moved four times, cause I didn't have enough room to restack my dirt. Once I restacked dirt, I filled up that spot, well, then I had to go work. And we loaded that dirt, once we moved that dirt, we had to move the excavator back, bust up some more dirt. We like, we moved back four, four times, where if we had a, the old excavator sitting there, he could've just kept busting and kept loading, we could've kept working.
One thing we might need to look at is, you stop piling all the dirt on your yard or your barn?
I do, I got the land, you know, landfill land, I keep some at the yard. If I got a major pile of dirt coming in, I usually put it at landfill.
We might need to start talking to somebody, get some spread out through, out the counter, that way we won't have to.
Yeah, yeah, that, I've looked around and, you know, no, over the years, and nobody just never come up. We need a spot now, it's gonna hit Layden up, so we need to start working on Union Church. I need a corner somewhere over there to, you know, to, to move and stop pile dirt, where then when I move over there, I can work, but now see, if I had the old excavator digging dirt and wasn't moving back forth, really wouldn't have to do it like we can work, you know, haul dirt, wouldn't have to stop pile. It saved me a, you know, a good bit of time, but as it is right now, we gonna do it the same way we did Rock Road. You know, we gonna try to move a bunch of dirt, stop pile it, then we'll move over there and work right close and work quick. But I do need a corner, you right down the road.
I'll see what I can find.
I sort of knew it is, but do we have a, are we in the process of trying to find a pit to get dirt? Or is that, is that in the works now, so it's?
Yeah, we've looked over the years, you know, and talked about it, but nobody really got serious about it, and we've never had a pit. And it's, it's a challenge coming up with the amount of dirt that we need to move all the time. I mean, it's a real challenge to get up that dirt. But when we stop pile dirt, like, you know, I get dirt, I ask the guys that done whatever they're building over in the red light, you know, when they was getting that digging that dirt, hey, you know, if you need to get rid of it, I want it. You know, I ask everybody, I got all the dirt from the Ford Place Hospital, um, Nutrino. You know, I steady work with these people to keep us dirt coming in to, to do jobs like this. Um, all the dirt we did Rock Road, we come from Birdsong. You know, Mike Floyd moved in, and I, you know, hey, if you got extra dirt, I want it. Not the best, but it, it build a road, so I steady, you know, steady hunting dirt and stop piling it, but once it's set there, it gets like concrete, you can't dig into it unless you bust it up.
We'll talk to Faye about where the money's gonna come from, and, and we'll talk to Doug about getting some prices, and then we'll kinda revisit this.
We got.
Getting back to the dirt, and maybe if we, we start this picking, maybe we, that might hit us out, that'll give us some dirt.
It does, yeah, it does, but I mean, we use a lot, lots and lots and lots of dirt, you know, I mean, it's, we do somebody big job.
I was saying, it's free dirt.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, where we clean these highways up, that's gonna be fifteen, twenty loads of dirt, fifteen, twenty loads of dirt, but I can't remember, I mean, I figured it up, kept up with it, and just that one job, I don't remember how many, but it was up into thousands of dump truck loads we hauled out there to one job, and this job we fixing to start on now, longer. From Todd Road to Bush Road is, gonna be a lot of dirt in places through there, that's, you know, it's just a lot of dirt. I got two piles out at the landfill, um, some of it we have to come up with dirt to go on top of. We can build a bottom layer, but top layer we got to find other dirt, and we just stacked, I don't know, probably a hundred loads off of Cooktown the other day, you know, when Docster went hauling, we went stacking. So we got probably over a hundred loads there at the office, you know, we got off of Cooktown. So, you know, we collecting dirt from everywhere we can get it from, but, I mean, that's just the idea. If you, working in two places, one excavator's kinda hard, and, you know, this one, I, I wouldn't be scared of it to, you know, to keep it, leave it sitting.
All right, well, we gonna talk to Faye, we gonna talk to Doug, and uh, we'll all revisit this next month, how about that?
Uh, while it's wet, we gonna try to clip some shoulders, and then we'll go back to working on dirt roads, you know, when it dries up. And try to work on, on Cooktown down on Baker County Line, and kinda while it's wet. Then soon as everything starts drying off, we gonna move and start right there where they cleaning out the ditch. You, you seen where they cleaning out the ditch down there? They doing a real good job there, we gonna try to drop those pipes in, and, you know, we'll pick up, start, you know, reunion church project, just like we did Rock Road. And we'll go to, we'll pick a road, and you know, we get through it that, and we'll move on to other districts and pick another road in their district.
We'll have one by then, don't worry.
We probably need to update those five roads like uh, we did last year.
That's right.
Somebody needs to pick a road in the district, and we'll see what's.
Well, that's, that's definitely a bad one.
This old galleon. You want to surplus, and why not? I mean, it's just called.
Well, it's, it's not really, I mean, that's something, that's kind of a joint thing with us in the city. They, they scrapped it, and I got it back running, we used it for years on project, you know, like leveling the road out, and we got through. Now we use a box blade. If y'all really interested in buying something, that's what I need right now to work on the roads with is, is another box blade. Ours is, is that, it was in two pieces when I come in, I welded it back together, but the running gear was snatched off of it. It's really got out of whack from being level.
Yeah.
And that's what I run behind, like we be on Rock Road, I run it every day and try to keep the traffic. Um, it's a twelve-foot pull behind.
You just want one just like that?
Box blade, yeah, that's all I can pull. I can't pull, nothing, no heavier, you know, I'd like to look around and maybe find us one, or wouldn't hurt my feelings if we bought, actually bought a new one, but I will take a, but I, that's something I need, that I really need, out of all of it, that's something I really need.
All right, we'll check in on all that, and uh, we gonna move on.
All right, I appreciate it, even more than five minutes later, but anyway, I appreciate y'all.
All right, y'all got anything else? Any questions, anything?
Hey, what roads you gonna start clipping on?
What was that, Chip?
You, you had mentioned about clipping, where you starting at?
We was working on Thompson Town when we left off, you know, when we start back, we gonna start back on it.
You gonna start at the city limits, go all the way to Fabcock, turn around and go back, or?
We, we gonna skip the houses for now, cause I don't have really enough labor to work on, you know, leveling the yards back off, and you know, it's a little, I'd rather work all around yards, but we gonna start kinda right past them yards and just work our way and work the whole road. The yards kinda get to be a hairy and tricky thing, I told them we'd probably come back and just maybe take the bucket from the loader, and run down side the yard and see if we can get enough clip without making such a mess in front of the yards, but we gonna start kinda right there before we get to the church and go to the par.
Yeah, all right, good deal.
We gonna catch it, we gonna work that in in between times, you know, when, when it's too wet to blade, we gonna try to run, you know, just work a road at a time, and just do what we can with what we got.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.